This week, we're going to be covering angels and cherubim. Okay, so angels in a nutshell are one of the most well-known characters in the story of the Bible. And perhaps they're the most misunderstood. Alongside them are the fascinating creatures called cherubim. Now, both angels and cherubim play important roles in the Bible's depiction of the spiritual realm. But this biblical portrait is quite different than what most modern people imagine when they think of angels cherubim. So in essence, the big picture of angels, biblical angels are there, they are the spiritual counterpart to the human biblical prophets that we read in the New, in the Old Testament. Both function as messengers of God and His divine counsel. Both human and spiritual messengers sometimes bring the power and life of God's heavenly realm here to earth in the form of signs and wonders. We can think of the prophets Elijah and Elisha in First Kings and Second Kings. So to really understand angels in the Bible, we need, we need to sort out the vocabulary and the relationships between the spiritual and the human figures referred to by the word angel. So some of the, a question was asked is how do we send messages to one another in lives? It was suggested talking, speech, postcards, phone calls, text messaging. What we're doing right now, Zoom, Google Meet, there's a lot of ways we could message one another. So in the Old Testament, in the Old Testament Hebrew, we have a word called malik. And malik in Hebrew means messenger, and it can refer to anyone. It can refer to humans and it can refer to spiritual beings sent with a message. So in First Samuel, we read, "So Saul sent messengers to Jesse and said, 'Send me your son David who is with the flock.'" And then from Judges 11, we have, "Now Jephthah sent messengers to the king of the sons of Ammon, saying, 'What is it between you and me that you have come to fight me against my land?'" However, when malik refers to a spiritual being sent by God with a message, our translations choose a different word. We translate malik as angel. So Genesis 19:1, we have, "Now the two angels came to Sodom in the evening, as Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom. When Lot saw them, he rose to meet them and bowed down his face to the ground." So in this passage, passage of Genesis, malik refers to spiritual and then human messengers, but our English translations use different words. So look at Genesis 32 for this example right here. "Now as Jacob went on his way, the angels," malik, or be malakim because it's plural, but malik, "the angels of God met him. Jacob said, when he saw them, this is God's camp. So he named the place Mahanaim. Then Jacob sent messengers," same word, malakim, "before him to his brother Esau in the land of Sair, the country of Edom." Now, in the New Testament, we have a different word that's used because New Testament is written in Koinan Greek. The New Testament Greek word is angalos, which is where our popular word angel comes from. So angalos functions in a similar way. It can refer to human messengers, and it can also refer to spiritual messengers sent by God. So here's an example of angalos referring to human messengers sent by God using Luke 9:52. "And Jesus sent messengers on ahead of them, and they went and entered the village of the Samaritans to make arrangements for Him." And then angel, angalos can also refer to spiritual messengers sent by God. So we see this in Mark 1:13. "And Jesus was in the wilderness forty days, being tempted by the Satan. And He was with the wild beast, and the angels were ministering to Him." So the practice of using different translation words, messenger versus angel, is helpful from one perspective as it clearly distinguishes between human and spiritual messengers. But it also hides the important common connection between God, His divine counsel, and the role of messengers sent by God. Now, in the Old Testament, we talked about this with the last few studies. God's heavenly realm is depicted as a throne room, and He is surrounded by a staff team called the divine council. But there are more spiritual beings than just His counsel. Numerous times, we hear of a larger group who are called by many titles. Just as a human king and queen have a large staff team that consists of council advisors, attendants, and messengers, biblical authors envision God's kingdom in a similar way. There are council members to whom God has delegated authority, and there are distinct beings who serve a different purpose. So there are council members, council members to whom God has delegated authority, and there are distinct beings who serve a different purpose. We hear from Psalm 89, "The heavens will praise your wonders, O Lord, your faithfulness also in the assembly of the holy ones." Or in Psalm 89 continued, "O Yahweh, God of host." Here's Psalm 103, "Bless the Lord, O you, His angels, ye mighty ones who do His word, obeying the voice of His word. Bless the Lord all of His hosts, His ministers who do His will." However, it's important to notice that God and the divine counsel often send messengers, or also called angels, that are humans, that are human. So this is the role of the prophets, the prophets of Israel, you know, like Jeremiah, Ezekiel, Isaiah. Their job is to bring a message to Israel's leaders from God and His counsel. So look at Jeremiah 23, "Thus says the Yahweh of host, 'Do not listen to the words of the prophets who are prophesizing to you; they are leading you into fertility. They speak a vision of their own imagination, not from the mouth of Yahweh. They keep saying to those who despise Me, Yahweh has said, 'You have peace, and it's for everyone who walks in the stubbornness of his own heart. They say calamity will not come upon you. But who has stood in the counsel of Yahweh? Then he should see and hear His word, who has given heed to His word and listened.' I did not send these prophets, but they ran. I did not speak to them, but they prophesized. But if they stood in My counsel, then they would have announced My words to My people." So here we have an example of the Lord telling the people through Jeremiah, right? So, so Jeremiah is a messenger, right, of God, telling them, telling Israel's leaders, hey, this is what the Lord is saying. You're having these other people deliver messages from God, but they're not delivering His word. They didn't stand among His hosts. They didn't get it from God. They're speaking lies. So this is just a good example right here of, of how God often sends messengers, they're humans, to dictate what He's saying to the leaders. We also have an example on this slide right here from 2 Chronicles. "The Lord, the God of their fathers, sent word to them again and again by His messengers, because He had compassion on His people and on His dwelling place. But they continually mocked the messengers of God, despised His words, and scoffed at His prophets, until the wrath of the Lord rose against His people, until there was no remedy." So once again, we have this example of how God did send messengers. He did send angels, and the messengers who are human, you know, are the prophets delivering messages to the people. But here in 2 Chronicles, we see how the people rejected the messengers of God and chose to not listen and to mock them. We have the human side, the prophets, right, delivering the word of God. And we also have spiritual beings who are sent by God to also deliver, excuse me, who are also going to deliver similar roles and messages in the same way that the prophets do. So for example, spiritual messengers, angels from God, often give messages on behalf of God. We see this in Luke 1, chapter 1. "And the angel of the Lord appeared to Zechariah, standing to him at the right of the altar of incense. Zechariah was troubled when he saw the angel, and fear gripped him. But the angel said to him, 'Do not be afraid, Zechariah, for your petition has been heard.'" Spiritual angels also perform wonders or acts of deliverance for God's people. We see this in Psalm 34. "The angel of the Lord encamps all those who fear Him and rescues them." We see this in Acts 12. "On the very night when Herod was about to bring him forward, Peter was sleeping between two soldiers, bound with two chains, and guards in front of the door watching over the prison. And behold, an angel of the Lord suddenly appeared, and a light shone in the cell, and he struck Peter's side and woke him up, saying, 'Get up quickly,' and his chains fell off his hands." So angels from God give messages, and they can also perform wonders and acts of deliverance for God's people, all on behalf for God. We also have angels giving comfort or provision. Look at First Kings. "He lay down and slept under a juniper tree. And behold, there was an angel touching him, and he said, 'Arise, eat.' And he looked, and behold, there was at his head a bread-cake baked on hot stones and a jar of water. So he ate and drank and lay down again." And this is from the prophet Elijah. We also have Mark 1. "And Jesus was in the wilderness forty days, being tempted by Satan. And He was with the wild beast, and the angels were ministering to Him." So angels can also give comfort or provision. Angels don't have wings. They, they don't have wings. Does anyone have any, is anyone shocked by this?
Yeah, I always thought they did.
No, they don't have wings. Angels don't have wings. Alright, so the question was asked, what do angels look like? And we had some participants from our Bible study show, show pictures, and they showed angels having wings, halos, a lot of the images which are very common in our modern culture. But when we look at scripture, we see that no angels in the Bible are ever depicted with wings. And we know this is surprising to hear because it's so fixed in our heads, but it's not in the Bible. Now, the cherubim do have wings. But we will see below that these creatures are very different from angels, and they were never called by this word. So cherubim don't give messages. They don't perform missions for God. They remain in the heavenly realm, unlike angels who can cross the boundary between heaven and earth. So we have an appearance of angels in Genesis 18. Now, angels in the Bible appear as humans. And there are numerous stories where angels are appear, but they're merely called men because they look like people. So angels in the Bible appear as humans. And there are numerous stories where angels appear, but they're merely called men because they look like people. Now, look, look at Genesis 18. "Now Yahweh appeared to Abraham by the oaks of Mamre, while he was sitting at the tent door in the heat of the day. When he lifted up his eyes and looked, behold, three men were standing opposite him. And when he saw them, he ran to the tent door to meet them and bowed himself to the earth. Then the men turned away from there and went towards Sodom, while Abraham was still standing before Yahweh." So in Genesis 18, Yahweh appears with two angels who go to Sodom while he talks with Abraham. But notice that these men are not called angels. So angels appear as superhuman when people encounter them in dreams and visions. When angels appear in the day-to-day world of people, in common life, they're often recognizable. But when they appear in visions and dreams, they dazzle and frighten people. Let's look at Daniel 10. "On the twenty-fourth day of the first month, when I was by the bank of the great river, that is, the Tigris, I lifted my eyes and looked, and behold, there was a certain man dressed in linen, whose waist was guarded with a belt of pure gold of Uphaz. His body was also like beryl; his face had the appearance of lightning; his eyes were like the flaming torches; his arms and feet like the gleam of polished bronze; and the sound of his words like the sound of a tumult. Now I, Daniel, alone, saw the vision. Then behold, a hand touched me and set me trembling on my hands and knees. He said to me, 'O Daniel, man of high esteem, understand the words I am about to tell you, and stand upright, for I have now been sent to you.'" So right here in this example, we have an angel who is sent by God who scares the living daylights out of Daniel, because repeatedly in scripture, when angels do show up, everyone's scared. Think, uh, think lively Christmas stories, right? The shepherds being scared when they see the angels. Mary being scared when she encounters Gabriel. Joseph being scared when he encounters Gabriel. Again and again and again, when, when angels do show up, they often scare people. But notice how they also give comfort, comforting words. And here, this angel tells Daniel, you know, don't, don't be afraid. You're doing everything fine, Daniel. Just understand I've been sent to you and I need to tell you some stuff. So once again, we see how angels are spiritual beings who are sent by God to fulfill missions or to give messages. So two unique angels are named in the Bible, and they have some kind of exalted role or status. So Gabriel and Michael are often called princes in Daniels, in Dan, in the book of Daniel. Now, Michael is named again in the New Testament in Jude and in Revelation. Gabriel appears in Luke, chapter 1, verse 19 and 26. So it's likely that Paul, the apostle, refers to one of these, either Gabriel or Michael, when he speaks of the archangel in 1 Thessalonians, which is also mentioned in Jude. Now, this word, archangel, means chief or lord. It's like a chief angel. And this assumes that, assumes that there's some kind of tiered authority structure in the heavenly realm. But this isn't really spelled out in scripture. There's no handbook of tiers of angels. There's this, um, passing references to it. Now, the apostles encouraged humble awareness of angels. But they also discouraged unhealthy speculation about them. So look at He, Book of Hebrews. "Do not neglect to show hospitality to strangers; for by this some have entertained angels without knowing it." Now, this example from Hebrews is most likely referring to the story of Lot in Genesis 19. Remember that story where Lot wasn't first aware that, that when the angels came, or they came to Sodom and Gomorrah, that he was taking care of them? He didn't realize that they were indeed angels. Only once they used their power, and then he understood who they were. Look at Colossians 2, and this is Paul speaking. "Let no one disqualify you, insisting on asceticism and the worship of angels, going on in detail about visions puffed up, puffed up without reason by his sensuous mind." So in this passage of Colossians, Paul is describing some kind of religious cult that has influenced some of the members of the church of Colossai. Now, the people who are doing these things are involved in practicing some kind of connection to the angels that involves either venerating them in honor and worship, or joining them in the worship of God. Either way, Paul is discouraging this practice. And in the broader context, when we look at Colossians as a whole, he points out, he points them to the risen Jesus as the one whom they should be focusing all of their worship and honor to. So not worshiping angels, but worshiping Lord Jesus. That's what Paul is encouraging the church of Colossai to do. Hebrews 1, "Are angels not all ministering spirits sent out to serve for the sake of those who are to inherit salvation?" It's a good question. It's a rhetorical question. So Hebrews, the book of Hebrews, chapters 1 through 2 are focused on showing people that angels play an important role in God's purposes. "But followers of Jesus should not elevate their importance or cultivate an unhealthy fascination with them. Rather, angels should be regarded as fellow servants of God, who appear at surprising moments to serve followers of Jesus in moments of need. In that sense, they should be treated as fellow members of God's family, to be welcomed and honored." Alright, let's continue onwards to our next section. So in a nutshell, the cherubim are multi-form animal creatures who are portrayed in the Bible as guardians of God's throne room. Let me say that again. Cherubim are multi-form animal creatures who are portrayed in the Bible as guardians of God's throne room. No one in the Bible ever meets cherubim in day-to-day life. And they are not the same as angels who can cross between spiritual and human realms. Cherubim are only ever seen by prophets who have dreams or visions of the heavenly throne room of God. So cherubim are first mentioned in the Bible as guardians of God's space in Eden, where heaven and earth overlap. So look at Genesis 3, verse 24. "God drove out the human, and at the east of the garden of Eden, He placed the cherubim and a flaming sword that churned everywhere way to guard the way to the tree of life." Notice that the biblical author simply assumes that the readers who are reading Genesis know what the cherubim are and what they do. This is characteristic of biblical meditation literature, which assumes that you are constantly rereading the scriptures, which will bring later texts in mind to help you understand earlier text. So one simple takeaway from Genesis 3:24 is the role of the cherubim. They stay at, stay at the boundary of heaven and earth, and they guard sacred space. And this is exactly the symbolic role they play in Israel's tabernacle and temple later in biblical narrative. So symbolic cherubim were placed all over Israel's tabernacle and temple, which were miniature representations of the garden of Eden and the place where God's space meets human space. So look at Exodus 26. "Cherubim were embroidered into the curtains of the tabernacle and on the veil that marked off the holy of holies. Two cherubim were also sculpted of gold and placed, placed on top of the covenant, excuse me, on the ark of the covenant." This was the focus spot of God's presence. So we read this in Exodus 25. "There I will meet you, and from above the mercy seat, from between the two cherubim, which are upon the ark of the testimony, I will speak to you about all that I give you in the commandment for the sons of Israel." So two large cherubim were made for the holy of holies, Israel's temple that overshadowed the ark of the covenant. And we also see cherubim engraved all over the inner wall of the temple in First Kings. "So these carved cherubim on the ark of the covenant, and surrounding the priests in the temple were physical representations of their heavenly counterparts, the cherubim who surround God's throne." This symbolism is made clear in the phrase, God sits above the cherubim. So look at First Samuel and 2 Samuel. "So the people sent to Shiloh and brought from there the ark of the covenant of Yahweh of host, who is enthroned on the cherubim." Look at Psalm 80. "Here a shepherd of Israel, you who lead Joseph like a flock, you who sit enthroned between cherubim." Look at Psalm 99. "The Lord reigns; let the nations tremble; He sits enthroned between the cherubim." So remember, the cherubim, they are guardians of God's sacred space. So the question was asked, what do cherubim look like? And we had, Eloise had a four-headed figure that had different animal heads, and they had two sets of wings, and he had eyes all over them, and that, that's a good representation. We see how in scripture that cherubim look different every time we encounter them. But unlike angels, cherubim have wings, and often they're described as having different types of wings. They look different based on which prophet sees them. But in each way, they look very strange, look very different. But Ms. Joanne Mitchell asked, you know, why I thought aren't cherubim, you know, little cherubs? Those like little fat-looking baby things that have wings? And it's like, no, those, those are not cherubim. Not at all. So let's continue onwards. The cherubim are once again described as multi-form animal figures. Now, their appearance is different every time they show up in the Bible. So this should lead us to conclude that the visual descriptions are symbolic. They're meant to point out our imaginations towards the meaning and significance of their appearance. So the only common feature we have to all the descriptions of the cherubim is that they have wings. In Exodus, they're described as having, in Exodus and in First Kings, they're described as having two wings. In Ezekiel, they're shown as having four wings. Their faces also appear differently as well. We have one face, which is likely human in Exodus and in First Kings. We have two faces in Ezekiel. And later in, excuse me, earlier in Ezekiel, we have four faces, a lion, a human, an ox, and an eagle. Now, we also have cherubim and seraphim. Now, in Isaiah's vision, he sees into the heavenly throne room, because remember, when prophets of God look into the throne room, they often see cherubim. But when Isaiah sees in the throne room, he describes creatures with six wings, and he calls them seraphim. Now seraph, which is the singular, or seraphim, which is the plural, this is one of the main word, Hebrew words for snake, particularly venomous ones. And we can see this evidence in numbers, in Deuteronomy, and in Isaiah. In Ezekiel's visions, they are called cherubim. So on one hand, they're called cherubim based on which prophet looks at them. And they can also be called seraphim. So maybe they're merged together. Now, Eloise mentioned in Revelation, her drawing came from Revelation. In Revelation, John the visionary has taken the visions of both Isaiah and Ezekiel and merged the living creatures cherubim and seraphim into a hybrid creature. So look at this from Revelation 4, verses 6 through 9. "And around the throne, four living creatures, full of eyes in the front and the back. The first creature was like a lion, the second creature like a calf, and the third creature had a face like that of a man, and the fourth creature was like a flying eagle. And the four living creatures, each one of them having six wings, all full of eyes around and within, and day and night they did not cease to say, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of God, the Almighty, who was, and who is, and who is to come.' And when the living creatures give glory and honor, thanks to Him who sits on the throne, to Him who reigns forever and ever." So what is the role of the cherubim? So we've seen from the previous passages, the cherubim play the role of throne room guardians and the choir praising the king, and their supporters or carriers of the divine throne. Their multi-form animal character is a clue to their symbolic meaning, along with the song they sing in Isaiah 6:3. "Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts; the fullness of all earth is His glory." So the seraphim and the cherubim are symbolic representations of the creatures of the land who offer their praise to the creator. Let me say that again. The seraphim and a cherubim are symbolic representations of the creatures of the land who offer their praise to the creator. The sheer diversity of the animal kingdom is a sign of God's creativity and power. Just as the host of heaven, Just as the host of heaven declares the glory of God, Psalm nineteen. Here we see that these, these creatures channel all the bird's song, the barks, the bear growls into a chorus of honor and praise to the creator. So there are many mysteries left unexplained in the Bible about angels and cherubim. But what we do see in the Bible, what is revealed by God, is awe-inspiring and beautiful. They remind us that the universe is a larger and more mysterious place than we can imagine. And ultimately, they invite us to channel our grateful praise along them as we honor the creator and the king of all things. Okay, I'll repeat your homework. When I say angel of the Lord, what comes to y'all's mind? And think of this in the Old Testament as well as in the New Testament. Well, I want to thank you for joining our study in investigating angels and cherubim, and we'll see y'all later.